That would work better if the hammer went down and the microphone were already turned on. Good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is a special study session for Tuesday, September 16th, 2025. The time right now is 7:00 PM. Going to go ahead and ask that our Clerk Wykoff, please call the role.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers present and establishing a quorum are Councilmembers Foulter, Beaumont, Hamford.
Received word from Councilmember Gamble earlier today that he would not be here for work-related reasons. Objection, we will consider his absence as excuse. Is there any objection? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on. Councilmember Walker, you raised your hand.
Yeah, can I have a point of privilege to make a motion?
Sure.
I would just like to see if I would have a second to observe a moment of silence to honor the assassination of Charlie Kirk on September 10th, 2025.
We have a motion from Councilmember Walker, a second from Councilmember Foulter, to observe a moment of silence. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes six zero. Thank you. We will now observe a moment of silence.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, next item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Walker, will you please lead us?
My allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comments. Is there anybody who signed in to speak this evening, Jody? Okay, and while she's walking over to get the list, is anybody here in chambers interested in speaking to the council during public comment? Okay, seeing none, that would make me conclude that there's nobody who has signed in on the sheet. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item. That's announcements and presentations. First item on the list is 5.1, 2025 Human Services Community Needs Assessment Presentation with Caitlin Harrigan. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Thank you very much. I am here to present this evening to you the results of our Human Services Needs Assessment. This needs assessment is reflected in the 2020 HPAK recommendations for the gathering and analyzing of accurate data related to homelessness and other human services needs in our area. This assessment updates the 2021 needs assessment that sets the focus for the next four years for human services priorities, informing not only funding or policy decisions, but encouraging collaboration with nonprofit, faith-based government, and other agencies to address these needs. Next slide, please. So for this report, it provides an updated review of services in our area through a comprehensive examination of primary and secondary data. So what does that look like? Primary data, which is the data we've collected for this report, includes quantitative data from a resident survey, as well as qualitative data from key informant interviews and focus groups. These key informant interviews and focus groups were assisted by a consultant, KSA, who helped us conduct these interviews and focus groups. For secondary data, there's both qualitative or quantitative and mixed methods reports and data that will be included in this report that we will go over. The structure of this presentation will follow the report going through it by topic. So as we go through each topic slide, it will address not only the primary data, but also the secondary data throughout. For our resident survey, it was open to the public from June 6th to July 27th. In total, there were 289 responses, which is an increase from our 2021 needs assessment with 226 responses. For outreach for our survey, we developed flyers with QR codes. We sent out social media posts and had information on the city website, as well as offering printed surveys at community locations, and we attended many Monroe and Sultan events throughout the community to spread the word about the survey. Overall, there was over 30-plus hours of community engagement in order to hear as much as we could from the community.
If you could hold it for a second. Councilmember Walker, you had your hand up. Okay, thank you. Please continue.
Next slide, please. For our key informant interviews and focus groups, again, we partnered with KSA to collect this qualitative data, and we were able to collect data from 18 key stakeholders from 13 different organizations, as well as six focus groups with 25 participants that were that were groups that were identified as being disproportionately affected by human services needs in the 2021 needs assessment. Next slide, please. So to go over the Sky Valley area as a whole, you can see here the population listed by zip code area. So this assessment covers Monroe, Sultan, Gold Bar, and Index, and not only the cities within there, but also the entire zip code areas, which also includes some unincorporated Snohomish County. There you can see both the 2020 census population and also the five-year estimates, and how much of the total population is represented within each area. In the second, from the right column, you can see how many survey responses were from each region, as well as what percentage breakdown there was of the survey and how it compares to the actual region. So as you can see, there was a bit more representation from the Monroe, City of Monroe residents and zip code 98272 residents than there is in the actual population versus Sultan and Gold Bar was slightly underrepresented. A fun fact about the survey is that women were two times more likely than men to take the survey, and despite making up less of the population of the Sky Valley area, this is very common among surveys, that women tend to be more likely to respond to surveys in general. Next slide, please. This also breaks down the demographics of our region with the five-year estimates data, as well as the percent of the population, and compares it to our survey data. Again, you can see with the percentages that there was a bit of underrepresentation from the younger crowd. Under age 35 had a lower response than the population of our area, as well as the Asian and Pacific Islander population is a bit underrepresented in our survey sample as well. Overall, otherwise, it's very similar and tried to reflect the actual population demographics of our region. On the right, you can see a few key statistics there. Some of these are significantly different than the county, state, and nation. Their increase in population is a bit faster than the nation as a whole. It's keeping pace with the rest of the state and county. Seventy-six percent of households in our region are family households, which is much more than county, state, and nation, which hovers around the 65% region. Those with disabilities, or veterans, or foreign-born are all very similar to national levels, and 32% of the Hispanic population has limited English proficiency, which is a little bit higher finding in our area than in surrounding regions. Next slide, please. So starting off with the topic of employment, the labor force participation rate in Snohomish County is a bit lower than county, state, and national rates. This is inclusive of people who may be not participating in the workforce due to retirement, or disability, or being a stay-at-home parent, a caregiver, and it also includes those who may be workers, discouraged workers who have not looked for work in the past four weeks. So it's different than the unemployment rate, which in Monroe is at 4.3%, very similar to Snohomish County overall. And it varies a little bit throughout the Sky Valley region. Sultan, interestingly, has a lower unemployment rate than everywhere else in Sky Valley, and the unemployment rate's a bit higher as you go eastward toward the mountains. In our survey, there were five different statements that people could agree with related to if they feel that the Sky Valley is a safe place to live, or if they feel like they would want to raise kids here, and all of those quality-of-life statements, there were five of them. Most of them, there was a majority of respondents who agreed with those statements, but the one that had only 32% of agree or strongly agree was there is economic opportunity in Sky Valley. So there was a bit less agreement with that statement. When asked about the perceived causes of poverty in our area, the second highest answer was lack of jobs paying a living wage. Over 20% of survey respondents had paychecks that didn't cover their basic living expenses, and 34 said that they were unable to put money or savings into retirement. Next slide, please. For education, overall educational attainment lags a bit behind the county, state, and the nation overall. Nearly 10% of residents in Sky Valley lack a high school diploma, and this is much higher among the Hispanic Latino community, as well as only 27% of the population having a bachelor's degree or higher, which is even lower when you look at males versus females, and then also among the Hispanic Latino population as well. The table on the right there breaks it down by by attainment level, and you can see throughout that there is a higher representation in Sky Valley of those who have only high school or some college, but then as the degrees get higher, there's a less representation in our area. However, good news is that on-time high school graduation rate for the cohort here in Sky Valley is better slightly than the county, state, and nation, which is good. Looking at the percentage of students in the different school districts in our area, the rates of being below grade level in math and English are very similar to state and national trends, but they're much higher when you look at the comparison to students who are English language learners, low income, unhoused, or disabled. And those are included in the report as well, and you can see how much higher it is for those student groups. For our qualitative data findings, in our focus groups, there was a lot of those who are in the Hispanic community who reported having a lot of language barriers to accessing services, and a really large desire for more classes to learn English that were accessible to them to be able to not have these barriers and learn English. There was also a desire for more books available at the local library that were offered in multiple languages. And in our seniors' focus group, there was an interest in having classes on technology and internet safety, as well as young adults in the youth focus group wanting to have more spaces where they feel like they could go after school and hang out, that were also good places to develop skills and continue their education. Next, please. For income, across Snohomish County, the area median income is $107,000 per year. Looking at the Sky Valley region as a whole unit, it's very similar in our area. However, it varies slightly based on the zip code area, with a higher area median income for Monroe compared to the other three cities. Roughly 7% of the Sky Valley population lives below the federal poverty level. This is lower than the state and national rates. This includes 10.2% of children who are in families who are in poverty, as well as 12.8% of the Hispanic Latino community, and over half of the Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander population. 2.6% of households in Sky Valley receive public assistance income, which is at a rate that is lower than the county, state, and the nation. And here in the table on the right, you can see the different AMI categories broken down by the census income brackets. With the percentages for AMI, they're not quite exact because of the way that AMI is calculated. So these are kind of estimates for AMI income bands in comparison to census brackets, as well as comparing it to the survey responses. So you can see that we had more responses from those who are in the extremely low-income or very low-income categories, and a little bit less representation from the moderate-to-high-income respondents. This will be reflective of the sampling that we tried to hear more from some of our lower-income residents through the survey, through outreach efforts. Next slide, please. For housing in the area, according to the Census five-year estimates, the median home value in Monroe is over $600,000. However, we know that the real estate market in our area is very volatile and changing all the time. And so to look at median listing prices in comparison to that data, you can see that the median prices are much higher than that. As of July 2025, in Monroe, the median listing price was over $880,000. In our area, 82% of units are owned and 18% are rented, and household growth rate over the past five years has been around 8% versus the state, which overall has been about 6% growth rate of households. On the right, you can see that owner-occupied households with a mortgage are far more cost-burdened in Sky Valley when compared to the county, state, and nation. It affects households that are owned with a mortgage more so than households that are rented in our area. This is also reflected of the fact that we have significantly more owner-occupied households versus rental households. Down below is a breakdown of different units with their affordability level at different AMI categories. And as you can see, only 12%, almost 13% of housing units in Sky Valley are affordable to households earning 60% of AMI. And so for, if you want to think about that in terms of a family of three, they would have to be, I believe, it is, thank you. A family of three would need to make $84,840 to be considered 60% of the Snohomish County AMI. Next slide, please. For our survey and qualitative findings related to housing, a quarter of the survey respondents were afraid of losing their home in the past 12 months. 27% often struggled to pay their mortgage or rent, and many respondents reported being housing cost-burdened. So down below, you can see over 37% of respondents said that they spend between 30% to 50% of their income on housing costs, and nearly 22% spent more than half of their income on housing costs, according to the survey results. When asked about perceived causes of poverty, again, the second one was related to job availability, and the number three highest cause of poverty was, or the perceived cause of poverty, was lack of affordable and safe housing. More respondents were renters or were unhoused than is reflected in the actual population. So that is something to consider when looking at the data. However, among the unhoused respondents, most of them responded that they were unsure about how much they spend on their housing costs for that housing burden question. Some key qualitative findings was that the focus groups and interviews reflected a significant lack of affordable housing options. There was a question on the survey where people were asked, "How can housing be improved in Sky Valley?" And overwhelmingly, the response was that there was a lack of affordable housing options or subsidized housing options. A lot of the qualitative responses that we got said that the new construction is only focused on high-income housing and not enough on low-income housing, and that there's not enough options for seniors or those with disabilities. There's also a lack of a safe shelter or day center, somewhere where there's a safe place for people who are unhoused can go during the daytime, and a lack of assistance for finding housing assistance. Next slide, please. In terms of emergency housing and homelessness, here in Monroe, we have two shelter options. Monroe Gospel Women's Mission, which has 16 beds, and Cocoon House with eight beds. There's also a seasonal cold weather shelter that has between 15 to 20 units of emergency housing. And according to the comprehensive plan update, there is about 137 emergency units that are needed only within the city of Monroe. That's not even taking into account the rest of the Sky Valley region. This graphic that you see here was created by Snohomish County from their point-in-time count that occurs each year in January, where there's an effort to go out and get data about homelessness in our area. And so part of it might be difficult to read, but in total, there were 1,140 people who were homeless across Snohomish County, 604 that were sheltered, and 536 who are unsheltered. Unsheltered also includes those who are living in vehicles. In terms of data that's specific to the Sky Valley region, which in this report is referred to as the Highway Two Corridor, there were 39 people at the time of the count who were unsheltered, homeless, in the Sky Valley region. And I also got updated numbers from the county just recently that also said that at the time of the count, there were 27 who were sheltered in emergency shelter, 19 of which were adult-only households, and eight which were children-only households. Next slide, please. With mental and behavioral health, among adults in Sky Valley, according to CDC data from 2022, 17% report frequent mental distress in the past month. 26% have been diagnosed with depression, and 36% report feeling socially isolated. All of those are increased above the national average, but the last one, the social isolation, is also reflected in the state and county-wide, as well as similar. According to the Healthy Youth Survey, there was an increase, which you can see in the table below. There was an increase in rates of suicide attempts among eighth graders from their survey in 2021 to their survey in 2023. Also, rates of uncontrolled worrying, which is one of their markers for anxiety, is at its highest ever recorded for high school seniors since they started asking that question in the survey. Overall, a lot of the statistics are very promising from the Healthy Youth Survey in our area for how well the community coalition is doing in their efforts to improve mental and behavioral health among students. But there is some concern with these statistics, as well as some anecdotal evidence from parents and students themselves, that some of the rates of depression are maybe felt a bit more acutely than previously, and affecting some of the school performance. For survey and qualitative findings, a lot of the respondents said that Medicare and Medicaid recipients had limited providers that would accept their insurance. And even for people who did not have public insurance, there was a lack of providers who were available. When asked about behaviors that people in Sky Valley need to have more information about, the top survey response was mental health. Followed, the next highest was stress management. So it's very important. People felt very strongly about that. Nearly 30% of the respondents felt sad or worried enough in the past month that it impacted their ability to go about their usual daily activities. And lack of access to services was also something that was reported in our focus groups, especially in the disability Hispanic Latino and the LGBTQ focus groups as well. Next slide, please. For substance use, in the second quarter of 2025, there were 222 opioid-related overdoses in the emergency department in Snohomish County. This is equal to a rate of 113 per 100,000 population. This rate is slightly higher, as you can see in the graphic there in the blue box. The rate in Sultan-Gold Bar and Index, which is that darker blue area, is a little bit higher than the rate in Monroe, which is to the west of that. While there have been a lot of strides in our area for more services related to substance use, which is a cause for a lot of praise, there's still, for some inpatient care services, there's still a gap for those who have who are underinsured, uninsured, or who have public insurance. According to Healthy Youth Survey data, less than 1% of students report regular fentanyl use. This is good, and it's on par with the state, but it's also something that the Monroe Community Coalition is looking at very closely, and is one of their priority areas. Overall, in Snohomish County, there has been a slight decrease since 2023 in the number of opioid overdoses, but there was obviously a major increase from 2021 to 2023, and that followed the state trends regarding fentanyl overdoses. From the survey data, when asked about behaviors the community needs more information about, the third highest response was for substance use treatment and prevention. When asked about the perceived causes of poverty, substance abuse was the number four response, which comprised 36% of the responses. The top barrier to receiving treatment, when asked if they had difficulty finding treatment, the top barrier was, "I don't know where to go." And the youth focus group that we talked to, when asked if they felt like there was a lot of drug use going on at school, there was kind of a consensus that is something very prevalent. So it was a concern among that focus group. Next slide, please. For health and dental care, almost 86% of residents are considered to be living in a dental health professional shortage area in Sky Valley, and 45% live in what's considered a primary care shortage area. So there is insufficient FTEs for those providers that are in range for the people who live in our area. As you can see, the table breaks it down by the types of providers, as well as the rate per 100,000 population for those providers. And as you can see, for primary And as you can see, for um primary care, nurse practitioners, and dental care providers, um the rates of providers are much lower um than in the county, the state, and the nation overall. There are also higher rates of obesity um in Sky Valley when you compared to um the county, state, and nation at thirty-five percent. Um, and there's also a higher rate of poor dental health leading to tooth loss among seniors. Um, those were significant findings. Um, key survey and qualitative findings, um twenty-two percent of the um survey respondents had difficulty accessing primary care. Then um top barriers were that the wait times were too long, um they were unable to find an available provider, and the appointment times don't work for their schedules. Um, when asked if they had physical pain in the past month that made it difficult to perform usual daily activities, um over thirty-eight percent said that they did. Uh, which is even higher than the finding for mental health. Um, Hispanic Latino residents were more frequently um reporting having difficulty accessing dental care, primary care, and OBGYN care. Um, seniors in the focus group um were concerned about the lack of specialists in the area and long wait times to access specialists. And um about something called hospital dumping, which is the practice where um uh long-term care facilities, when a resident will go um to the hospital for care, um will um fill the bed in their absence and not have one to come back to. And that was something that was brought up in that focus group. Um, for people with disabilities, um there's a difficulty accessing a lot of specialists related to different therapies, speech therapy, occupational therapy, physical therapy, um as well as um a lack of providers that can give um a autism diagnosis. There's very long wait times for parents who are trying to get um an autism diagnosis for their child to set up um IEP care um and things like that, other services. Next slide, please. For transportation, um over half of residents in Sky Valley commute at least thirty minutes to work. And seventeen percent of commuters travel greater than an hour to get to work. Um, and so you can see in the table there breaks it down by um travel um time that it takes them to get to work. Um, and you can see there's a significant um increase in the population who it takes between thirty and sixty minutes and then also um sixty minutes or longer. Um, over all types of our um data collection, um traffic was a major concern and barrier to accessing services and to um employment. Um, public transportation um was not reliable or accessible enough. Um, and it was, did not cover all of Sky Valley. A lot of people had concerns about accessing bus stops and that the bus stop does not come close enough to where they live. Um, all focus groups um mentioned transportation as a top concern um due to lack of um safety, accessibility, availability, and poor traffic conditions. Um, there's also um from the Sky Comish Valley Transportation Action Plan that came out recently. Um, the findings from that um found that twenty-three percent of Sky Valley residents experienced moderate to high transportation insecurity. Um, and that these percentages are higher um among different uh minority groups. Um, and um that the main reasons for difficulty with public transportation was that they did not take them to where they wanted to go, um that it took far too long relative to driving, and that it did not serve their area. All of these were um amplified quite a bit, especially from our senior population and those with disabilities as well. Next slide, please. For childcare, um Snohomish County is considered to be a um extreme childcare desert um with sixty-two licensed spots for every one hundred children of working parents. Um, Washington State ranks third in the nation for the least affordable infant care in a childcare s- family childcare setting. Um, where one infant in a center would take up um over fifteen percent of the median income for a married couple, which are the highest income earners, um or over half of a um median income for a single mother. Average childcare costs in Snohomish County um for two children, um well, actually, this is, um, excuse me, for um Sky Valley specifically. Um, to have two children in childcare um averages at about thirty-three thousand per year um or thirty-one percent of the median annual household income. In Sky Valley, um fifty-four percent of children under age six um live in households where all parents are working. So either a two um income household with both parents working or in a single um household with that parent working. There are twenty-four DCYF licensed facilities. Um, sixteen of them are in-home care and eight childcare facilities, including two Head Start programs or E-CAP programs. Um, this is a lower rate of Head Start programs versus the county, state, and nation. Um, at uh, I believe it's uh two, two per one hundred thousand. Um, in the graphic on the right, you can see the median cost of care as a percent of median income by age. This is across um Snohomish County overall. And you can see that for um infant um care in a childcare center would consume twenty-two percent of the median income. Snohomish County.
We could hold for a second there. Councilmember Sparbrooke, go ahead.
Yes, your figure, uh, I'm not questioning what you've done. Is this accurate? Thirty-three thousand and ninety-one dollars a year for two children, childcare comes to six hundred and something dollars a week? Six hundred and thirty-five dollars a week? Does that, is that correct? The twenty-four hundred dollars a month for two kids for childcare?
That sounds about correct. I have not uh divided it as such. But um yes, that is the, that is the figure that um that I was able to find.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Before you continue, any other questions at this point? Okay, please continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, for the survey and qualitative findings, um eighteen percent of survey respondents overall said that they um needed childcare and had difficulty finding it. Um, women and Hispanic Latino respondents were more likely to experience these difficulties. Um, the most needed types of care were after-school care, um toddler care, and preschool. Um, and no surprise, um eighty-four percent of these respondents who had difficulty um said that it was due to childcare being too expensive. Um, among the Hispanic Latino focus group, um they said that there were very limited openings and there were a lack of providers um that were culturally sensitive or spoke their language. Uh, next slide, please. Thank you. Um, food and nutrition, um food insecurity across Snohomish County is at about nine point seven percent of the population. Um, this is thirteen percent of children um who are in food insecure families. Um, and interestingly, about half of food insecure residents are ineligible for nutrition assistance due to income limitations in our area. Um, for the basic food program, which is um offered um by DSHS, it's also um referred to as food stamps, um there is about eleven percent use rate across Snohomish County. Um, and Sky Valley as a whole is at about fifteen percent. This is based on two thousand twenty-two data. So I was not able to find any more recent data than that, unfortunately. Um, but um as you can see in the table on the top right, it varies greatly by um region with Monroe at a ten percent use rate and index at a twenty-five percent use rate. Um, among the three school districts and fourteen schools across Sky Valley, all but three of them have more than thirty percent of students who qualify for free or reduced-price school lunches. Um, this can be as high as seventy percent of the student population when you look at certain schools such as Frank Wagner Elementary. Among the survey and qualitative findings, um thirty percent of respondents said that they sometimes or often struggle to pay for food. Um, in the um key informant interviews, there was a reported um funding concerns for the local food bank, um including the the Sky Valley Food Bank. Um, and then residents um mentioned um wanting more community gardens, locally grown foods, and um culturally sensitive options. Next slide, please. Um, so looking at two-one-one data, um two-one-one is a number that um anyone can call to receive information about community resources. Um, they have a data dashboard that shows um what many of the calls um are for and um whether those needs were met or unmet. And when they talk about um met versus unmet needs, um met needs just meant that they were able to successfully connect a client to that service, not necessarily that the client actually received help for that service. Um, so among the top requests for Sky Valley specifically, um the top request was housing and shelter at twenty-five percent. Um, most calls were for finding low-cost housing. Um, and there was a high percentage of unmet rental assistance requests, which hints at the um lack of availability of rental assistance programs. Um, the second highest um re- request is in the other category with twenty-one percent. This was more general inquiries for where people could volunteer, where they could take donations, um general contact info. Um, and then the next highest after that was utilities, mostly for um electricity needs. Um, and then um government legal services, um majority of that was um for housing law concerns. And then um six percent for food requests. Um, for the survey and qualitative findings, there was um a reported lack of low-cost or no-cost legal services, um especially a need for um bilingual providers. Um, and um of the survey responses, twenty-six percent said that they sometimes or often struggled to pay for electricity. Um, seventeen percent of respondents applied for assistance with phone or internet. And um six percent of um respondents said that they do not have reliable internet or telephone where they live. Next slide, please. So looking at all of that data that we just went through, um created a needs analysis um matrix that um analyzed the categories on the basis of um frequency, severity, use, gaps, and barriers to access. So in the first column, um each service was ranked or was um coded by the frequency of mention across data collection methods. Um, severity and impact of need, which is the next column over, was reflective of um either the number of residents affected, um the critical nature of the service, and categories that were significantly lacking compared to county, state, and national rates. Um, current level of service use was the next category. And then finally, gaps and barriers to accessing services, um which is reflective of responses from residents, especially among vulnerable groups who reported having difficulty accessing the service um due to either availability or different accessibility concerns. Um, so it goes through each of the topics that we um covered and um helps to create kind of a system for looking at these needs in a more um holistic way in order to address them appropriately. Let me move to the next slide, please. Um, with that, overall, we have the um top needs in Sky Valley. Um, the first being affordable housing, um followed by um mental and behavioral health access, um transportation services and safety, food and nutrition support, affordable childcare, health and dental care access, substance use disorder treatment and prevention, and employment education supports. So the next um slide goes into um the recommendations based on these different categories. Um, and um the ones indicated with an asterisk are also ones that are um in alignment with um the two thousand twenty H-PAC recommendations um and or the um Monroe Comprehensive Plan um related to the housing recommendations. Um, so firstly, are to support programs that encourage affordable housing production, housing stability, and emergency housing. Um, next, um improve the continuum of care for behavioral health and substance use disorder services. Um, these two are grouped together in that category because of how often they're co-occurring with each other. Um, increasing access to medical, dental, and nutrition services, um improving regional transportation services and traffic safety, expanding access to affordable childcare and after-school programs, providing more educational and vocational training opportunities and low-cost legal services, and then advocating for a drop-in center for basic needs, housing navigation, um or pop-up services. Um, so that um concludes my portion of the presentation. I would welcome any um comments or questions um from council on anything that we've covered.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Hergen, um so this is being presented as a draft, correct? And so the interest tonight is to uh field any questions from the council and then to see if there are uh any areas that the council would like to see updated or get more information, that kind of stuff, right? Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Somebody put their flag up down. Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Beaumont.
Thank you very much. It was really interesting presentation. A lot of really good information. I had a question about the youth interviews that were done. Um, I see that the the collection period was during June and July. So I'm just curious, since school was out, how did uh they go about finding these students and what were the ages?
Yeah, so um initially, we had um focus group recruitment where we started in June and July with um having signup sheets that we went to, um places like the farmer's market and other events to try and get people to sign up for focus groups. Um, and then we also um reached out to a lot of our um area service providers um who work with um youth to um see if there was anybody who was interested in participating, um as well as putting it out on social media um that they could um sign up for a focus group. Um, eventually, we um had great success with um having youth join us who who were volunteers at the um kids' club. So they were teenage volunteers um who were there. Um, and then they just came and joined us um for the um focus group virtually after that.
And how big was this group of students, would you say, or youth, I should say?
I believe there were five or six.
Okay, and the ages would have been?
Um, teens. Um, I believe the youngest may have been around eleven or twelve um up into the teenage year.
Seventeen or so? Okay, that's great. Just curious because I think that, you know, one of the things I really care about are youth voices and elderly voices in the community. And I just want to make sure. I know it's really hard to get people to come, and I understand that. But I just was curious about how you went about collecting those voices and um, thank you for the information.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions from council or thoughts? That was a very, very thorough report. Really appreciate the work that you did. Oh, go ahead, Councilmember Hanford.
Oh, thank you. I was just gonna say the same thing. Uh, very thorough and uh a lot of data. And uh appreciate all your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, go ahead, Councilmember Fisher. The, no, they don't.
Thank you. Um, no, great report, a ton of stuff. Um, I've read through it several times. Uh, I'm looking forward to the future. So we have a bunch of data. Now we need to decide what we're gonna do with it and what works and what doesn't work, and that's what I really get excited about. So I know that this is the first part of it. Um, one of the things that Councilmember Beaumont was mentioning about the school kids, the school district right now is really trying to partner with the city on a lot of things. And it might be a really good idea to do that during a school year because I think they would be more than happy to um to partner with you guys on that. So, but thank you for all of that data.
Yes, thank you. I will mention too that we've um presented some of this data as well to the Monroe Community Coalition who's involved with um prevention um in the schools as well. So we're very involved um with that group and have um presented some of those findings there as well.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead, Councilmember.
Hi, Alon. Um, you guys always do such a good job of presentation and um both when you're speaking to us and the the PowerPoints and all the displays. I just appreciate it. Really um helps us understand it and I think it uh hits or or impacts us a lot more. Um, thanks to the the presentation, so great work.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other comments? Any other questions? Any other comments? Thank you very much. Really appreciate the work.
Thank you.
All right. Let me go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That's item number six, Councilmember Reports. We'll start off with Councilmember Fullter.
Yeah, I know. I'm just trying to think how much I want to share. It was a great week in town. I just want to say that I am very proud of our citizens for their love of this country. And and I just, I really appreciate all the people who are not afraid to speak that.
Thank you. Councilmember Walker.
I would just say the same thing, heavy week, but it just makes you so, so grateful to live where you do in a town that is clearly very respectful of peaceful civil discourse. It's something to be treasured. And thank you to the rest of the council, all of our boards, our mayor, everyone that participates and contributes to that, the thing that's most important, which is community and civil discourse. So thank you all.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor. I would, I would just echo the same thing. And I attended the Belonging event. I know that was a couple weeks ago. But just the kind of that just kind of was like the spirit of, and with all the heavy week and everything else, like, it's so nice to be in a community where we care about each other, and we care about our neighbors, and yeah, very grateful for this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fisher.
Yeah, crazy week. I don't really even know what to say. So I guess, you know, we're all kind of talking about the Charlie Kirk thing, not mentioning it specifically. I can say there was very little that I agreed with, with that man. I can say that it is an absolute shame that he was speaking and was killed. I look at all the anger in our country. It's very unsettling to me. Social media, it doesn't matter who this seems to happen to. There's people that just continue to be hateful and angry. And we're heading down a really, really scary path. I think part of that with our moment of silence, again, I think this has affected probably some of our council members more than it affected me. I am still going to abide by a moment of silence for them, and also for somebody that was killed that was speaking their mind. I don't really know what else to say about it. I mean, we have got to learn to debate and argue and disagree without violence. So that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Beaumont.
Yes, I concur with all the comments. That being said, I will not go on and on about it, but it is a great segue. This coming year, on July 4, 2026, is America's 250th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence. So that's a big deal. So I'm hoping to get Lorraine, a woman named Lorraine Ralston, from the State Historical Group to come do a presentation. I've attended a presentation of this already. And cities and counties all over the nation are preparing wonderful celebrations for this event. And I think it's really timely to talk about it tonight. Monroe has an opportunity to do all sorts of wonderful things to celebrate. And we should be celebrating that we live in a country where people can speak out and can be different. And I won't go on and on about that. In other more positive news, we are going to get historic plaques on some of our downtown buildings. This was an effort that was, it's been a long-held goal of the Monroe Historical Society, to create some kind of historic district downtown, to recognize some of our beauty, beautiful old buildings. We do have enough funds to purchase three of them. There are these beautiful bronze plaques that look like ones that you see on nationally registered and recognized buildings. They're lovely. And we have building owners that have agreed to allow us to install these plaques. So we're starting with the Dolof Key Building, the Howland Building, and our original City Hall, which is down at 207 East Main. So they're being delivered hopefully this week, and we will be preparing some kind of a ribbon-cutting dedication this fall. And then the hope is to continue to fundraise and see if we can get more plaques and do the old hospital, you know, do the old telephone building, and just create this lovely walking tour downtown, really elevate our history, and get something really cool going between these beautiful new historic downtown signs that we put up last year. So very, very excited about that. And we'll look forward to the whole council and the whole community getting behind that project. And that's about all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And he knows he's going next. Councilmember Scarborough.
I can't expound on everything that's been said, so nothing else to report.
Thank you. I'm gonna go on to Mayor and Administrative Reports, item 7.1, City Administrator Report for the Extended Agenda. Jacob. Backup City Administrator Roberts. There you go.
Junior varsity. So with that said, just setting a standard here, folks, coming up, we have a P3 meeting on the 23rd of September, where we are going to be talking about critical areas updates with Mr. Lance Bailey. Moving into the regular business meeting that occurs after that, there are some, there's a public hearing for the proposed code amendments for local permitting, hearing and first reading with Kate Turtlow, the minutes, the page, or sorry, the checks, the minutes, a part code ordinance update, final adoption with Kevin Teague, business license code amendments, adoption with the esteemed Jody Wyckoff and Liam Barr. And then we have some unfinished business for an ordinance for the Connor annexation with Amy Bright, and Republic Services Contract Response to Labor Disruption Event and Review of Contract Status with Ms. Darrow. Moving on from that, we have some department reports from Mr. Teague. Oh, there's a new business item there, an ordinance to extend interim R7 zoning with Anita Marrero. And then we have the usual reports beyond that, and a need for an executive session and a closed session to discuss collective bargaining.
All right. Thank you. Any questions on the extended agenda? All right, saying none. Go ahead and move on to the City Administrator Report. Oh. City Clerk Administrator Extraordinaire.
Yeah, we'll say that. So just real quick, in case people haven't heard already, we are going to be closing City Hall, aka the Treehouse, the Temporary City Hall, on this Friday, September 19, because the six of us remaining over there will be moving over here. And we are going to reopen this facility to the public on Monday, the 22nd. Yay. We are also going to host a public open house on Friday, October 31, during the downtown trick-or-treat event, which I believe is from 3:00 to 6:00. And Mayor Council photos, October 7. I've heard from everyone except two people that it's a go. So I just keep an eye out for your email. I'll send details as soon as I get everything firmed up.
All right. Any questions for Jody? All right, thank you. Mayor's report. Yeah, just you all said a lot of different parts of what I was feeling as well. I have been watching how things have been changing over the last decade or so. And our nation and different nations across the world have reached a a point that is beyond concerning. And the events of the last week, the events of earlier this year, the events of last year, are things that continue to weigh very heavily on my mind and on my heart. The, the stars on the flag, when I was in scouts, I was taught that the blue there represented freedom, and that each of the 50 states, although individual, all came together, was about unity, was about being one country, but 50 individual states, being able to have that plurality of opinion and perspective, but also being able to honor and to love one another. The things that I continue to hear about on social media, I'm not on social media that much, the things that I continue to hear about on the news, are things that are really concerning to me. I ask that our community continue to model what it is that the community told us that they wanted and that the council adopted, which is reflected in Imagine Monroe right there on the wall in front of us, that we make sure that Monroe is a safe place for all, where everyone feels at home, and everyone feels they belong. Because those 50 stars in that blue field of freedom, that blue field of peace, is what we should be working to achieve. One nation, under God, invisible, with liberty and justice for all. I denounce the, a lot of the language that I've heard over the last, not just couple weeks, but also the last several years, and certainly both the attempted assassinations and the assassinations that have occurred over the last couple of years in particular. We need to model here in our community what they should be modeling at the national level and at the state level, and actually in some communities, including around the region. We hold ourselves to a higher standard here. I won't be here in January, and I pray that our community will continue to hold ourselves to that higher standard. For all of your words tonight, for your leadership in our community, and for our residents and for our staff that are working through this difficult time, from my heart to yours, thank you. I don't have anything else to add from my mayor's report tonight. We're gonna go ahead and move on to discussion items. Item number 8.1, Festival Lot, Presentation of Results of Public Engagement Process with Patrick Dougherty. Patrick.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. It's wonderful to be here. I'm not here usually in person that much as a contractor, and I really wanted to take this opportunity to be here in person because of the importance of this issue, and also just to be in our new space early on in the time. And Liam McCorkle is also going to be presenting. So say anything at the beginning if you'd like.
Thank you for having me.
Great. So we have a PowerPoint, and this PowerPoint is more kind of a placeholder for what we say. We don't have like too much detail on it. Just wanted to kind of chat with you. And I'll just say in advance that, oops, certainly some of this is, maybe most, is a bit of a repeat for you, because we've been to you a few times about this. But it's also important to remember that there are folks that might be watching this streaming. And we want to make sure that the background information isn't just glossed over for people who may be new to the issue. So there'll be a little bit of background that you've already heard. And I think to start off, we'll have Liam McCorkle do some of the background that got us here.
Yeah, and Jody, you can fast forward, I think, two slides. There you go. Project background. So as Patrick said, a lot of this is going to be reviewed, but just to make sure that we are all on the same page, I'm just going to quickly review the background of what got us to this point. So the idea of the festival lot has been around since as far back as the 1970s, as a place to host gatherings, community festivities, and also cultural events. That was also proposed and included as part of the 2008 Downtown Master Plan, evolving into this concept of a flexible space that would promote outdoor gatherings, and also provide amenities like parking and restrooms. In 2023, Monroe completed the purchase of two adjacent properties off of Main Street. That's the kind of old Union Bank building area, with the goal of eventually turning this into a festival lot area. If you fast forward to more recently in this year, in March of 2025, Patrick Dougherty came to you with four kind of original ideas of what to utilize for that lot. His four options that he provided were to renovate that building, to provide a festival lot, to provide a public parking garage, or a small plaza, with a small plaza, excuse me, or to use that area for a mixed-use apartment complex. The feedback we received from council was to really hone in on that festival lot idea. So Patrick went back with the consultant and really honed in on four options that we presented back to council at its May 13 meeting. After that meeting, we received direction from council to proceed with the public engagement process, which commenced in June. So with that, I'm going to give it back to Patrick to give a kind of refresh.
Before you move on, Patrick, please let the record show that Councilmember Gamble entered chambers at 8:04 PM. Thank you. Good evening, Councilmember. Mr. Dougherty, please continue.
Yes, again, this will be mostly a repeat for you, but again, just to kind of refresh your memory and let new folks stream, you know, watching to know what we're talking about. So again, after your input in March to really focus on festival lot, as Liam just said, we developed with our designer four options to develop that festival lot concept. And you can see here, option one is essentially kind of the least level of investment and change, retains the existing former bank building, remodeling it for future uses, like the visitor information center, some kind of pop-up retail, public restrooms, maybe some meeting space, demolishing the former chiropractor building, adds a small permanent plaza space, you can see there kind of to the north and wrapping around a little bit on the east and the west, add some EV parking spaces off the alley, retains basically the parking area as is, has a total of about, oh, excuse me, which of course can be used at any time for festivals or events. So it becomes the festival lot just on demand. And the total parking there is about 33 spaces. Preliminary development budget, and I really underline that word preliminary, is about $850,000 to $1 million. Option two, next slide, goes a little bit further in providing basically a, so it keeps the building just as the previous option for the same type of uses, but in this case adds a little more dedicated permanent event plaza space to the west, as you can see there, still wrapping around a little bit, a few more spaces off the alley for EV parking. And this total, again, the whole space can be used, that meaning the the permanent event space, and then expanded by the parking area at any time for larger or smaller events. That has about 30 parking spaces in total. One might question, well, how do you get that many when it's using part of the parking area that you just saw before? That parking area is not optimally designed right now. And in this particular concept, that sort of double-loaded corridor of parking on the west side is more efficient than the current space. So that's why it actually only loses a couple, I guess, three spaces from option one. Then option three, oh, and the budget for this one is $950,000 to 1.1 million, very preliminary ballpark estimate. Then option three is the first of two concepts that sort of scrape the site, start over, and let the program happen as we may direct it. In this option, you see a permanent plaza space facing the street, facing the sunnier area, with a smaller kind of right-sized building at the north end of that. That building still can accommodate the visitor centers, retail cafe, maybe some meeting space, and the public restrooms. Then you see an area immediately to the west that's parking, but it's treated a little more specially, so that it's sort of the obvious expansion for medium-sized events from the permanent plaza. And then, of course, the whole parking lot to the west could be turned into event space for larger events. In this, there is still EV parking, but this time in the parking lot. And this one jumps up a little bit in budget, ballpark estimate 1.7 to 1.9 million. Option four is kind of the full meal deal. This is the town square idea, where the whole site is dedicated to the town square concept. Parking is just off the alley. There's the town square, there's room for playground or stage, there's room for small vendor kiosks, those are the sort of orange squares with X's on them. There's still the retail/visitor center/cafe and restroom building, room for landscaping, et cetera, et cetera. This option, estimate 2 to 2.3 million. So it is important, and I've said this every time I can, whether it was during public outreach or at the farmer's market or whenever, that these are just illustrated concepts, they're certainly not designs. They have a level that looks like design, just so that the concept can speak well to you, but really, don't focus on any of the specific little pieces that everything can be started, done differently. And of course, this is what we presented to you in May. And I won't go through all of the stuff that I said before, but it is important to remember. but it is important to remember that a downtown public space in any city is different from a neighborhood park, neighborhood green park with swings and playgrounds. It's, it's something that, it's a jewel, but it needs to be cared for because it's the place downtown where you don't want bad things to happen and you only want good things to happen. So it does need to be actively maintained, programmed and have activity. And that's why all of the options do have a building because that building provides that day-to-day presence, whether that be the retail presence, whether that be the visitor center, the restrooms, you know, whatever, and the meeting space. So there needs to be that, but also it's the kind of thing that through whether city action, Chamber of Commerce, other organizations, or even the private sector, that there be activities that happen on whatever size plaza it is throughout the year. And in the packet, there's things like Tai Chi Tuesday, yoga group exercises, dog events, kid events, Taco Truck Tuesdays, flower market, holiday market, tree lighting, whatever, many things that could happen there. So I think at this point, I shuttle it back to Liam to talk about what our public engagement process was, which is the, the real meat, the new meat in the sandwich tonight is to tell you what happened with our public engagement process. So this from now on is new information.
Yeah, and you can see on your screen right now, this is the comparison between the options, but we can go to the next slide, Jody. So for the public engagement process, we started it and kind of completed it throughout the month of June. Throughout that public engagement process, we did two open houses on different days and times. Throughout both those public or open houses, we had about a dozen attendees, which worked as a good focus group to hone in and solicit feedback, preferences and ideas. We also hosted two info booths at the farmer's market. We also provided comment cards that individuals could put into a box and we could anonymously read out their comments. Those comment cards are transcribed into your agenda packets as well. We also created a dedicated webpage with all the background and information. And then probably our premier method of collecting feedback was our online survey, which had three hundred and sixty-five total responses. We publicized it via Facebook, we did targeted ads on our website in a row this week and the business newsletter. We also reached out to the high school and had some of the civics classes take the survey as well. So that, that was our public engagement process and I'll, I'll hand it back to Patrick to go into what the results of that were.
Next slide, and then next slide after that. So this is probably kind of small, but we'll just dive right in and then I can do some overall takeaways. Maybe I'll say the overall takeaways is only three bullets first and then we'll do the detail. The overall takeaway is that the public expressed a clear preference for option three, that you saw of those three options. They basically preferred a design that balances the open space with a modest amount of infrastructure, adding function and charm and providing the most public parking. Option three does have the most public parking. So you'll see here, and we'll just do a quick run-through of the survey results, that option three is ahead, that's that kind of amp, gold, golden bar, I guess. You know, closely followed by a four and two in that order, then the next slide. That's okay. These are, my, no glasses. When identifying their priority, what was the, what were the reasons? And you'll see there, actually, I can't read that far, so I'm gonna have to just have you read it because I can pull up here. I don't have that handy, sorry. Should I have, you have it, or I will find it handy or is it not?
Go into the agenda bill.
Yeah, okay, let's just do that. You can read it, but it's just I, I had dropped down where it was, I'm sorry. It's a long, okay, so, yeah, so people, people were expressing a lot of interests in, in making sure that there was the outdoor space, of course, but that it be flexible. And that you see, that's really the number one at orangish type bar, and this is something that carries through, not flexible just in, in particular day, but like I said, throughout the year. They wanted the amenities of, you know, playground, whatever. And then also parking, you see parking was a number, it wasn't the top one, it was the second one, but it's pretty high up there. And that's probably led to why option three was chosen by the public, that's because it has the most, the most parking. What types of event, oh, next slide is a question about what types of events or programming would they like to see? And to see, there's lots of ideas, especially as market events like holiday market, flower market, Halloween market, food truck events, live music performance, those are kind of the top three and then lots of other kinds of ideas that could happen there. And that was good to see a wide range of response to that. The next slide. This question didn't really yield any important information because it was almost a wash. This is basically the importance of the following goals, activating downtown, creating community, creating year-round. They like them all, so there was no, there was no frontrunner on that question, but this is nice to see that people. This, on the, on the contrary, the next slide is the opposite with a clear frontrunner, which is how important is it that the space remain active and usable all throughout the year and all seasons? And I was like, well, it's very important, just way out in front, which is maybe a bit of a giveaway, but it's just interesting to see what the public says about something that maybe we, who have been involved in park planning and thinking about civic issues as our day-to-day, you know, bread and butter, would think. But so does the public, so that's really important to see that echoing. And then the next slide, there's a question about, you know, multiple functions that a festival lot could provide to the community and what was really important to them. Again, number one is the outdoor gathering in community space, but number two was parking. So that was very interesting, public restroom is very important. And then you see the other items as well. Next slide. This is kind of the feel, kind of like the mood board for the space, and what do people think? And family-friendly was number one, followed by natural and green, which is a little bit of a head-scratcher for a downtown space. I'm not sure, but that just means that they wanna see landscaping for sure and, you know, involve, include some trees and some landscaping. Festive and vibrant, and that's, that was, I think, a really important one as well. This one I thought was interesting because it went exactly in the order of the questions, like, like a Christmas tree coming down. So showing what kinds of things they'd like to, amenities, excuse me, they'd like to see in a festival lot. And the, this goes to that flexibility and that year-round usability. The highest one was shaded and covered areas. So on these ninety-two degree days that we get sometimes, you don't wanna sit in a hot paved lot or brick or whatever the pavement might be. But conversely, it'd be nice to be able to sit and have coffee on a cool day with a little bit of drizzle and feel like you could do that outdoors. So that was, and they just go literally in that order of, from kiosks to outdoor. But it's interesting to see that outdoor cafes, open space, possibly, you know, playgrounds or splash pad, that kind of stuff was. And then there was a lot of, excuse me. Oh, this question I thought was interesting because it really shows the people who were responding, are they the frequent people, are we just preaching to the choir, or is the people who never come downtown, what is it? Well, the never people didn't really respond, but you've got people who come all the time to just maybe once a month. And that, I think, was really good, that was a very good representation of people who still feel connected to downtown, even if they're only there once a month, and even the ones that responded who rarely come downtown. So that was good, we even heard that at the farmer's market. Some people who came by and said, well, they don't go downtown very much, but I'd love to see this, or, or whatever their comment was, put it in the box. And then we had open age, I'm not gonna go into ages and stuff like that, go into the open comments, thank you, yes. So, get back up to that. Well, I'm not gonna read all that, but you can, you can glance at it and I'll just do a quick summary if I can get back to, whoops, where we were. Sorry about the bouncing around, that's the problem we're having. So the, in a second, we're gonna tell you what the, so the common, the things I wanna say the most is that parking really came up. And if there were three hundred and sixty-five open comments and we had two opportunities, really three, a third is a small one, but two robust ones and a kind of a half another one of open commenting. So that's like seven hundred to eight hundred comments that we had to go through and read. And this is the highlights, and the number one highlight is parking, just to share that. The shaded areas, making sure the restrooms are available, making sure that it's not a place where there's criminality or encampments or vandalism, so that again speaks to the year-round activities programming. Interested in, you know, places for kids. The people in downtown to come together, we want it to be a beautiful asset, not empty, et cetera, et cetera. And a lot of people, the last bullet, which I really appreciated in reading the comments, so many people thanked you all, us, you know, the leadership for doing this, just even the process, just doing and asking them their opinion. And it really got a lot of thanks about that. Okay, so now moving on, we went to the three boards this summer. We went to Economic Development Advisory Board first, then to Planning Commission, and lastly to Park Board. So here is a quick summary of, those are the dates and the next slide, oh, actually, I don't know if you want to detail on the slide, that's fine. No, I'll just give you the details in your agenda memo. So the first E dab. As you, as their name implies, they're very interested in the kind of business side of it. And, you know, they wanted to know how could the public get involved, how could the business community get involved in funding this? Are there sponsorship opportunities for it to be fun drive, and they're immediately putting the money together, so that was interesting. But they really wanted to make sure that the, that the site could be also used by the community for rental possibilities for events that are not just city events. They really thought that the E V parking idea made a lot of sense as an attraction to bring people to downtown Monroe who are trying to go over the mountains or up to the mountains, especially in winter, when the E V cars batteries don't last as long. And so they would stop in downtown Monroe and have an opportunity to walk around, shop, have lunch, dinner, whatever. They weren't that supportive of the splash pad idea, but a fountain could be nice. Obviously, questions about the budget time. They, they wanted to see the site started to be, start to be using, started to be used now. In other words, start to have little events before this even happens, just to get the community mindset to stay that this will be a festival lot, put a sign there, future home of festival lot, maybe have a couple of events a year there that are sort of presaging what might happen. Pop-up events in the building possibly. Yeah, I think I summarized that. Then we went to the planning commission, planning commission, that was a great idea. They wanted to make sure the public continues to be engaged to this level in the design and development process, whenever that happens. They also recognized that option three seemed to be preferred by the public because of the great amount of parking that that one provides. But some of the commissioners felt that the parking maybe isn't the number one issue. That was interesting. Could there be an option, excuse me, a hybrid, this is an option that's a hybrid between options three and four? Because I think some of the commissioners felt that four, with the grandiose town square, was our ultimate goal and that maybe we didn't need so much parking, interesting. They liked the E V parking, as I said. They really liked the small tenant building for the reasons we've already mentioned. Programming activation, same thing, they felt that landscaping and greenery are gonna be very important, especially using native plant material in our climate, since the public did put emphasis on that. They didn't feel this was an opportunity, the great opportunity or place for this splash pad idea. They felt that's better in that neighborhood park. And they wanted to make sure that the historic nature of Main Street be considered in designing if a future building is built versus the one that keeps the building, that it, that it be compatible with the historic nature of Main Street. Then lastly, the park board on the twenty-first of August. They also really liked this concept, of course, and they expressed a preference kind of for three or four, or again, possibly a hybrid. One of the things they said right off the bat was they weren't so concerned about having the most parking, but having the best open, public open space, whether that took away a little bit more parking than option three has. They were also concerned about the architectural compatibility of any onsite building. They would like to see some more community meeting space in whatever building is there in addition to the Vic and retail. They like the E V parking as well. They wanna make sure it's designed for low maintenance and sustainability, that we don't design something that's difficult to maintain with a complicated fountain or complicated playground parts or something because again, for budget and sustainability. And they also didn't believe it was an ideal place for a big playground or splash pad, but certainly kid-friendly features should be included in, in the design. So that's the summary of our public engagement process. The next steps, we've completed phase one, phase two, we're in phase three, which is basically coming back to you at this point. This evening, I think what I'll do is I'll bounce up to the top of your agenda bill. It gives you your options for this evening, and there's more than that, these are just three. Certainly don't have to take any action at all this evening if you don't want to. Just, you could put this on a future council agenda to continue to discuss and simply have questions and general comments this evening. You could theoretically identify a preferred concept this evening if you'd like and then similarly put it on a future agenda item, council agenda to continue those discussions and identify next steps and direct a staff what to do. Another option is to identify a preferred option either this evening or another meeting coming up and then request the park board to provide input to you regarding the prioritization of the next steps in this process, which is design and development, a design development, vis-à-vis already identified important parks projects. So that's sometimes what it comes down to, is that puzzle of what, what are, what's the priority? And then that could perhaps inform you if there's any budgetary impact of the next steps in the coming year or is it in future years? So I think with that, there's probably some questions and then obviously, Mayor, you can take it back and lead that for us.
All right, thank you very much. Just to clarify before I go into following up with the council members, you spoke with the planning commission, economic development advisory board and the parks board. The parks board hasn't seen the final, this presentation that you just provided to us, is that correct?
No, they did.
They, they have seen this whole presentation you just.
Well, they didn't see the, they didn't see the presentation, I mean, yes, they did.
Okay, they, they saw, they saw the results and everything, okay, thank you for, thank you for that clarification. Okay, Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
Thank you, very comprehensive report. I wanna go back to our inception, when we started this process, when we looked at the bank building in the, in the lot. We looked at using the existing building for something, visitor center, you said. Visitor center and retail space. I don't see anything on the one and two, what that means. And then having that not be a portion of tearing down that building, what kind of ideas are we gonna have to put in that building? Because we were talking vendors of some kind, I guess, a visitor center. We also talked about maybe sharing it with the Chamber of Commerce. If any of those are a portion of what we do with that space, how are we gonna determine by priority who gets to be a vendor and sell coffee in there? Or who gets to sell whatever it is we're gonna put in there? Something will come up, I'm not suggesting, I have an answer to that. I'm just saying it's something we will have to deal with, whether we do it in that building or we do it in the cabana down on the end of number four. The other two spaces, three and four, basically have us tearing down the building and starting over with the lot. And, and at a significant increase in, in dollars. I'm not sure we decided where we were gonna get that money, whether that was gonna be a levy that we asked the citizens to vote on or if we had the money earmarked somewhere in our budget. And if we did earmark it in our budget without a levy, what effect would that have on our police station that we wanna renovate here in the near future as well? And I, I pose those questions to the councils, not necessarily to you. Of the two teardowns, three and four, option three was, where on the list? Number one? Okay. And option four was, which one, which I, one or two was option, was where on the list?
Now I have to use my memory.
So could we do, can we go ahead and move back to the slide that showed all four options with the.
Number three was number one, number four, I think, was number two. And then number two, I believe, was number three and number one was number four.
I, if it were up to me, I'd first look at why are we tearing down the building if we can utilize it nicely? I do agree that option four or three are more aesthetically lovely for our downtown, if you will. And I have no objection to that or tearing down the old building if we can determine where the money's coming from. You know, again, are we gonna have, when we canvass the patrons of our community, did they realize that it came with a dollar figure? And they, they agreed that it's okay to, option four, to spend two million dollars if we can tell them and make them understand that they might have to help pay for it. Again, questions and points of talk, talking points for the council. That's about all I had and I'll leave it open to the rest of the council to see what they have to say.
Mayor. Yeah, go ahead. Information, that, the table that's in front of you, the comparison table, was presented to the public in all the venues, whether that was the online website leading to the survey or in the open houses or the farmer's market. So they did see these relative cost estimates in all of the information we presented, so just. So they did see these relative cost estimates in all of the information we presented. So just wanted to make sure that was.
Thank you. And one of the things we're looking for tonight, and of course, cost plays into it. These are very rough order of magnitude costs and they will vary over time. We're looking for direction tonight if or it could be brought back as well, or you could have it go to the parks board and all sorts of things. So there are different options, but we do to council member Scarborough's point have a whole bunch of projects in our capital improvement plan, as everybody knows, and the council working with the mayor will need to and staff will need to figure out how to prioritize and then how to fund those at some point in the future. So that's that's something. We can certainly run just rough estimates as to what the cost differentials will be, but you can also identify an option and then we can figure out more details on it as well. All right, council member Scarborough, you spoke, council member Gamble. I saw your flag go up.
No, I appreciate all the intel and and all the effort to get the the feedback on this. I'm very, I'm very pleased. I I figured option three would come back as is the most popular one. You know, the the other part of this that I look at too is that I want to say it was, when did we do the streets downtown was about 10 years ago?
Where we, yeah, about 10 years ago.
About 10 years ago. And when we, yes, and when we did that and council member Hanford, you probably remember at that point in time, because we lost a few parking spots. Heard about that for a long time. Yeah, you know, I still feel it was the right thing to do. I think it's, you know, really spurred a lot of economic development down there. But at that time, we said that one of the guiding principles that we were taking out of that is that we would put as a priority as a council and as a city to find or to get additional parking for the downtown core. And so when I look at option three, I think this really it it more than fulfills that. And it also is is the most flexible. Just looking at it, you know, when you're using the plaza in conjunction with the festival lot, it looks like you still have about 20 parking spots, even when you're using it in that capacity. So that is a net add, even if you take, as we only lost four, just for the reminder. When we, when we did the street stuff downtown, there was four spots that were lost. So I think this does a lot of stuff. I think option three really does give us the best, you know, use of that space. The the best flexibility, it fulfills a very, you know, a 10 year promise and investment, you know, from a, from a parking side of the equation down there. And yes, the price is more, but I mean, very seldom do you get an opportunity like this. Where we get to do something right. And I I would just say that as we're going through and we're prioritizing, you know, projects and we're looking at this one. You know, we want to do it right. We want to set this up so that it can be used, you know, well into the future. And we're not sitting there going, gosh, man, I wish we'd have gotten rid of that white elephant of a building that's there. And I mean that with all affection and love, because I love the, you know, the the location where it's at. But we did all tour that facility and it there's some, there's some, probably some asbestos and some health stuff associated with that building as well, I'm sure. So I I do think the right thing to do would be to really create the space from scratch. So I'm all in from my perspective on option three, and I love that that's was it, it was overwhelming when I look at the data across the board. Several different questions that that was it. So just appreciate all the time and effort that was put into it. Thank you.
Okay. Other thoughts from council on preferred options? And then we can talk about next steps. Go ahead, council member. What we'll do is we will go from council member Walker to Beaumont to Fisher. I'm sorry, to Foulter. And then to Fisher.
Survey results were awesome. Thank you guys for going out to those farmers markets and everything else to get the participation that you did. Is there a, what, what is the cost that might be added if we say, let's advance with option three? Send it back to Parks Board? If we wanted to look further into that, but maybe not talk about dedicating money to it yet?
Well, not sure I fully understand the, what would cost anything and go to the parks board and talk about or ask them what their prioritization would be of other projects that are already on the table. And how would option three, for example, fit into that? That doesn't cost anything to do that. But did you mean?
Of the the 70,000, the original 70,000.
Yeah, I mean, there's no, there's no additional work unless you were asking for additional design work or something. So there's no additional work to go to 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 Parks and Parks Board and ask that. It's just a question of laying in front of them. Okay, there's this project, this project, this project that's on your plan. Now here's another project. How do you envision juggling them? Well, we recommend back to council as the the juggling result of that. And there's no cost to that. We can certainly do that.
Awesome. Yeah, I'm in favor of that then. And one thing that I would love for us to explore, this, this could be for the plaza, this could be for the North Hill Park. Is the the prospect of fundraising from community groups or or businesses. There's a park in Quarter Lane. I go there every year. I send pictures of it to the mayor, I think, every year and go look how cool this is. Maybe I think I've done that. At the entrance to the park, they've got a board. The way they did it is every piece of equipment in the park has a name, a business name or a person's name attributed to the donations associated with it. And I've just always been so interested in in how we could utilize a fundraising method like that. So maybe we can reduce some of the cost burden. So in that process, if it goes back to Parks Board for them to further explore option three. I would love if if that I don't know, that process of discovery could come up, how how other cities around the nation like ours have used an option like that, or how they fundraised from from outside sources without doing a bond or something.
Yeah, and with our new parks director, definitely get some good input about what grants may or may not be available at the state level. One of the things that I'll just mention is that obviously every community has parks that they'd love to build or enhance. And those are all in front of our legislators in Olympia every year. I'll tell you just one thing that does help us is when they're associated with downtown revital revitalization, that gets an extra star. That's an extra kind of wake up because people are very interested in our state government and ensuring that our communities have solid and and healthy downtowns. And so we get a little extra bump by being part of a downtown project and not just yet another neighborhood park. Nothing to diss neighborhood parks, but but it helps us a little bit, but there's a lot of competition for that money. So there's potentially state money, potentially foundation money, and then of course, our own community.
All right. So council member Walker, were you interested in three and four or just three? Just three copy. Understood. Thank you. Council member Beaumont.
Thank you for the presentation. This is, project is really, really important to me. And I'm really excited that you had 365 respondents. That's really good feedback and I'm very pleased with all the efforts that you made. I really feel like we got a good community cross section. So council member Walker took the words out of my mouth. I was going to say the same thing, that I think that this is number one, a long term project. We're obviously not going to be able to afford option three anytime soon. So I think we present it that way. I loved, I loved EDAB's comments. They really have some great suggestions here. And one of them is, once council approves an option and approves next steps, there should be signage on the site announcing that the festival lot will be developed with an image and estimated timeframe, estimated timeframe can be way in the future. But I love that idea and I love the idea of the community ownership, you know, YMCA. I still go find my tile and my son's tile here in Monroe with the YMCA. When Pike Place Market did the bricks, I bought a brick. And when I go to Pike Place Market, I go find my brick. I think that's a fantastic idea. I think that it it really makes people feel like they're part of the project. And I think there's just a lot of really great ideas that we can come up with for that. I think in the meantime, renting out that space, having events there now is very important. We, I've talked about this before, we really have a lack of meeting space in this city. And in fact, I went to a meeting last week at the library and it was double booked. And we had to go to Sky River Park and meet in a gazebo because it's just really tough to find places to meet. I know planning commission now is going to be here, but we've all been scrambling, trying to find places. So that's something, maybe we could use that building while we're working on option three for some some public meetings, dress it up a little bit so we can do that. But I think the idea of having the tree lighting there this year and let people know, hey, this is our space. We can start doing things down there now and building the momentum and the excitement and let people know, hey, thank you for your input. We may not have the money now, but we're going to fundraise and we're going to make this a complete community buy in, great space for everyone. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And so we can certainly bring back more conversation at another date, just about what to do in the meantime. I know that there's some interest. I've heard that from a couple of council members, but we want to focus on which option to take forward also for this evening. Council member Foulter?
Yeah, I have very little interest in option four. Option three is the clear winner for me for many reasons that were already stated so eloquently by my co-council here. I just think that it fits our community better. I would love to see the purchase a brick type of idea where in the future, we get to look back and say, yeah, I was part of this because the downtown is different than any other place. It is, it's got the history, it's got the, just that walkability and yet so many things to see while you're down there. I'm obviously a fan of downtown, having lived there forever. But yeah, number three is definitely my, my favorite. I do also agree that you did a great job talking to that many people. Talking to that many people. That was a lot of good feedback that we got from people and just the 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 pub, the comments that you listed with just people who are grateful that they get to be part of the process. I think it just proves that it was well done. So thank you.
So far, I'm hearing sort of a preference toward three, just for awareness. Council members can certainly make a motion if if your interest is to move with option three, you can the, that's, it it sounds like people are sort of leaning toward number three, they're having it go to the parks board and everything. Council member Foulter, you still have the floor? Did you have anything further? Thank you. Council member Fisher, go ahead.
Well, I guess I have to go with option three. I might be one of the only option four, but that's okay. With option four, my only pitch would be to maybe be able to activate some of the parking in the alley that's across the street to kind of take this place of of the parking spaces that would be taken from three to four. But I love the idea of Bearcat Plaza. I think it's amazing. So pitch there. But know that the fundraising for it, I think, is important. Thank you so much for going through all of this stuff and doing all this legwork. Activating it before, I think it's a huge deal. I put down Benson Boone concert on the roof before we tear the building down. It could be amazing. And I'm kind of like, was it you two that did that in New York in like the 90s or something? It was amazing. And I like to see all the trees and shrubs, even though it's commercial property. Maybe we can tweak our policies a little bit and have more shrubs and trees on our commercial area sidewalks. But yeah, I really like option four, but since people talked about option three, I guess I can go with that. But we could also activate the alleys for more parking, just saying. Bearcat Plaza.
All right. Thank you. Council member Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I do like option four, but I I think three is is good. A couple of thoughts. With option three, I like the fact that you could put a a stage or something has incorporated into that visitor center bathrooms, whatever. And have it be facing out into the kind of the corner there. And if there's a way that we could, when we do all that, make it so that the the ground, it's, it's all at the same previous road that we installed on the main drag. So that it's all flat, so that it opens up into the main street there. I love that idea. And I think then it'd be much easier to to close down different parts of the the streets and not feel like, oh, watch out for this two, you know, big drop. But most importantly, in the meantime, beef, as we're going down this road with number three, I concur with what councilor Beaumont said as far as signage. But I would be interested in doing some very minor improvements to the site as it is, because we know we don't have the money and for option three right now, and we know it's not going to be in the next year or two possibly. So in the meantime, rather than let it sit as is, I would be interested in spending a limited amount of funds to clean it up. Make it look presentable. Activate it as parking. And also, like you said, plan to use it for different community events and things like that this coming fall and like pretty much immediately. Even as it is, and then once we clean it up a little bit, so I think that would be wise to to utilize it while we're waiting, so. And thank you for all the work you did on this. That's very good. Great to to see the responses.
Right. Thank you. So as we start going back through folks again, we can either make a motion or I can just understand that the direction is option three. Council member Walker? We have a theory down here that you're going to make a motion.
Short question, then a motion.
Okay.
I was surprised by how many people selected splash pad. I know that they're awesome, but that was, that was pretty crazy. When it comes to activation, I think in terms of family friendliness, people clearly love those things. When we ran a a bond a while back, and I think a splash pad was one of the selling points of it. Does anyone remember what a, what kind of rough cost that adds to a prod, if you just had a flat piece of brick and concrete, the most simple splash pad? Does anyone know a ballpark? No?
No.
All right. I I guess I would like to make a motion if if one is necessary and mayor would ask that you assist me on the language to advance option three for discussion. And I would add a splash pad be a strong consideration.
Okay, okay. So the options that we have, let's, let's go ahead and modify this a little bit. Is there any objection to to proceeding with option three? Okay, so the decision is option three. So is there any objection to us taking option three to the parks board? So that they can review it and consider other thoughts, which might include a splash pad and some of the other conversation pieces we've had today? And then get a recommendation back to the council with their thoughts relative to the other things you've brought up today? And also a prioritization as to where they might put this into the park CIP? Any objection to that? Okay, council member Gamble, you've got your flag up and then go ahead, council member.
All I was gonna say is that I I think the splash pad should, we should consider that separately. That we should, because I, we, message is loud and clear on that from my perspective, but I think it should go to the parks board to say, hey, where does this make the most sense? In the totality of the park system? And then we put a plan together and 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 where it makes the most sense.
Any objection to that?
Remove the asterisks.
Yeah. Okay. So I'm understanding that our direction is this, a motion is not necessary unless somebody wants to say so moved. That we will move forward on option three. It will be forwarded to the parks advisory board. Staff will relay the comments that council members shared today. And will consider recommendations on modifications as to what they feel is most important for you to consider from the conversation today. Part of that will include a spray pad and whether or not this or another location in the city would be an appropriate place for a spray pad. And then they'll also give a recommendation as to how that might fit into the park CIP. Agree on all that? Okay, I see thumbs up from all the council members. That's the direction that we're moving with. Thank you all. And I would have liked option four also followed by three. So for the two of you down there on the end, I I liked the way that looked too. But I'm very happy with option three, two, one. Okay, we're just going to numbers here. All right. Anything else on this item? Okay, thank you both for the presentation this evening. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That item is eight point two, review of status and options to move forward with solid waste recycling and organics collection contract and services. And Megan Darrow, you're going to be presenting this evening? Oh, and before we move on to the Oh, and before we move on to this, I also heard loud and clear that we need to bring back for discussion. So this, this also goes to the last item. We need to bring back for discussion what the transition plan is for the property, what we're going to use the property for in the near term. And so we need to make certain we plug that into the extended, extended agenda at some point over the next couple or few months. Concur? Thank you. Yeah, I heard that too. Let's just make certain it's on there. Now you're up. Thank you.
Can everyone hear me okay? Okay, great. Good evening, Council, Mayor. I'm Megan Darrow, the Environmental Program Manager for the city. Tonight's discussion is regarding the current contract status of the solid waste collections contract with Republic Service and what options are available for the solid waste collections contract moving forward. Our discussion tonight will not cover the service credit offered by Republic Services in response to the labor strike back in July. That follow-up discussion will take place during the next business meeting on the twenty-third. Slide. During the July twenty-second city council meeting, public works staff were directed to report on the status of the current solid waste collections contract held with Republic Services, as well as to provide information on what council's options may be to change the contract or explore a new one. Public Works has entered into a short-term contract with Been There Consulting to analyze the current contract and determine what options are available to the city moving forward. As you know, the solid waste collections contract is the most comprehensive contract that the city maintains. Being that the contract is so substantial and involved, staff thought it appropriate to bring in a subject matter expert to tonight's meeting to present to the council on their options as well as to answer questions in real time. I would like to introduce you to Jeanette Jurgensen, who has worked in municipal solid waste collections for over eighteen years. She's managed the municipal solid waste collections contract for the City of Federal Way for fourteen years before crossing over into the private sector to guide other cities through procurement processes and management of municipal solid waste contracts. She is an expert in solid waste legislation, procurement processes and contracts, and program logistics. As we move through our presentation tonight, please feel free to ask questions as you have them. We want this to be a dynamic presentation. I will now turn it over to Jeanette.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be here and to work with your staff and be able to share some information with you. Slide, please. So a little background, the city currently manages the contract with Republic Services for garbage, recycling and compostables collection for residential multifamily and commercial sectors. This current contract expires at the end of twenty-twenty-seven, and then it automatically renews every three years. The contract can be terminated with three years' notice. And so, for example, if notice is given in twenty-twenty-five anytime, then the contract would end at the end of twenty-twenty-eight, and a new contract would need to be in place starting January first, twenty-twenty-nine. Once the city has given notice to terminate, the contract cannot go back without negotiation with your hauler. Oh, so sorry. Just the last part. Once notice is given to your hauler to terminate the solid waste contract, you cannot go back and get that contract back unless you negotiate new rates and terms with your hauler. And it does take about two and a half years for a competitive procurement process. Next slide, please. So tonight, we're going to talk about the three main options that you have available. Number one is procuring a brand-new contract. Number two is amending your current contract, and number three is doing nothing, just no changes. Next slide, please. We're going to cover these one by one. So the first one we're going to cover is a new contract procurement. Slide, please. So as I mentioned, the contracts take about two and a half years. You want to start at two and a half years before the expiration of your current contract. And this is recommended so you have a full year for the process for the procurement, and then a year and a half for mobilization. And this is important because whoever your hauler is on your new contract will probably need to get collection trucks and containers and carts. And for your city, it's about fifteen thousand carts that they'll need to procure, label, and get out in the community, and over a thousand dumpsters and containers. So it's a significant job. In this procurement process, one of the first steps is for staff to develop the procurement documents, which includes a brand-new solid waste collection contract. And this contract is going to address everything that you want to see. So these aren't quite a copy and paste thing. It's a very personal thing for each city. The documents will then go out to industry review where haulers can give feedback whether this is a realistic and achievable contract. You can't ask for the moon if it's not deliverable. So you take feedback from the haulers, feedback from council, feedback from the community, and you polish up those documents and then start the procurement process. And the contract is released generally through a request for proposal. There'll be two sets of Q and A, and then the proposals will come in. At that point, there'll be an internal committee that will evaluate these proposals. Generally, cities wait the rates as more important than the quality of elements like customer service, but they're both very important in a contract. Once the city has selected a highest-risk proponent, then they sit down with that proponent and finalize the contract. This is not a negotiation at this point. This is just tweaking a few little details. Usually it's lawyers arguing about some wording. And then that contract is presented to council for approval. So that whole process generally takes a year. It can be squished up a little bit. But the big part of your process is the three-year notice to Republic Services if you want to terminate. So it doesn't necessarily make sense to kind of squeeze that up. And once that process is done, you'll give the new hauler or the incumbent, if they've won that contract, about a year and a half, could be up to two years, to be ready for that January first, twenty-twenty-nine start. And next slide, please. So the elements that go into a solid waste collection contract can vary widely. Every feature in the contract has a cost. And so staff's job and the city's job is to determine what set of features is going to be most valued by residents without having them pay for unwanted things. And so this is generally why cities do process and don't just copy and paste somebody else's because you want to look at what are the services that you want in your contract? And how to address things. So there are specifics like if a customer on mandatory garbage service is not paying their bill, how do you want that addressed legally? So lots of little things that are in the contracts. But it's also fun because you get to pick out new features as well. And so some of the features that other cities have chosen to put in their new contracts, one of the most popular is the free curbside bulky item collection. So every year, residents can put out a refrigerator or a stove for free collection. There's increased education and outreach, where they'll visit every multifamily complex and hand out a tote bag and recycling flyer to encourage recycling. There is for businesses embedded lock and gate fees, so that is included in the garbage costs and they don't have to pay for that. So there's lots of different elements that are available, but it's important to remember, everything has a cost. Next slide, please. So money is the big thing. So on the table in front of you are comparisons of rates from the last four contracts that have gone through a competitive procurement in Washington State that had their rates published as part of the council packet. So I don't necessarily want you to focus on what the actual rates are. I'd like you to look at what the percentage increase is. It's very hard to compare rates because different people have weekly versus every other week recycling or embedded composting or different things. But all of these contracts stayed with their incumbent hauler. All of these contracts, their incumbent hauler was the lowest-cost proposer or bidder. And none of these changed the major cost drivers, like changing the frequency of service. So there is a significant increase in cost to going out to a procurement, even if you keep your incumbent provider and don't make too many changes. And one of the reasons for this is that contracts that were procured ten, fifteen years ago, the costs have not kept up with what the haulers have to pay out. So if your contract has the service component increased by ninety percent of CPI, that is not keeping the hauler whole. So all of these contracts that are older with really low rates have to be reset. We have instability in the recycling markets. We have decreased value for recyclables compared to ten years ago. We have higher costs for compost disposal. There's continued uncertainty about inflation, and uncertainty means risk, which means costs. Next slide, please. So option two is amending your current contract. Next slide, please. Contract amendments can be done with your hauler at any time. We've already done five of them on the current contract. If there is a cost or a savings to residents, it is strongly encouraged that these amendments align with the annual rate change. So to give you an idea of what that timeline looks like, decisions of a contract amendment would need to be finalized and through council by the end of July in order to give the hauler time to put together the rates and get those to the city by September first, so the city can review and approve those rates. A forty-five-day notice will go to residents in mid-November to let them know about the rate increase for an implementation on January first. Nothing in garbage goes very fast. It's a long process. Next slide, please. So all of the things that we talked about, the, the features of a new contract can be included in the contract amendment. Again, remembering that there is a cost to everything. Here are some examples of labor disruption-specific examples that other cities are utilizing. The amendment could include communication, so clarifying when you want communication from your hauler during a labor dispute. Are you looking for every service day they need to report to you? Are you looking for every business day? Are you looking for every calendar day? So these are the things that would need to be clarified. What do you want? Collection events, so that if there is another labor dispute, people can drop off materials. But will need to be addressed or negotiated, which materials are being picked up? How many sites are going to be there? The number of boxes or trucks that need to be available. What are the hours of event? Who is staffing the event? Who is performing traffic control? How many days of labor dispute until the box, until this collection event happens? How many times do we do the collection event? Who's promoting it? So there's lots of elements to work out and to negotiate. And of course, every benefit has a cost, so you want to be thoughtful about what you're asking for when you're asking your residents to pay more. The partial service credit for customers, this has come up, the customer rate is partially based off garbage disposal and part of it is for service. And that includes everything from drivers, trucks, carts, billing, communications, customer service. So all of that is in that element. So they usually give credits just on that service component because they're still collecting all the trash. But this includes a very high amount of administrative work for haulers because they have to then go into the billing and then people are going to call in and ask, what is this all about? So there's going to be a cost to that as well. And performance fees, different cities in the region have different performance fees that are payable to the city, basically to reimburse for city staffing. But it could be more than that. Some cities request a thousand dollars, some are ten thousand dollars a day. And the question to those cities are, how are, how is the city going to disperse this money for the good of the community? There's one thing to make a hauler pay ten thousand dollars a day, but what are you doing with that money for your community? So essentially, elements like this are an insurance policy. So the more you pay, the better policy you have. And so the question is, as we're looking at the garbage contract, what sort of insurance policy do you want? And next slide, please. And the third option is no change. Next slide, please. If nothing is done, the contract will automatically renew on January first, twenty-twenty-eight for three more years. This does not change any of the services. It's the contract that everybody knows and is familiar with. And there's no increase to rates with the exception of the annual increases that are allowed in the contract. This doesn't require any extra staff time, and there's no additional costs. All the cities that I pointed out in that table with the rate increase were at the end of their contract, and they did not have any extensions left. So they've utilized everything. The cities I've seen around Washington State, nearly everyone has extended their contract if they are able to at this time. There's a couple of exceptions. But there are bigger issues going on there. And next slide, please. So.
Keep going. Keep going, yes.
Okay, so a quick summary of the things we've talked about. Option number one, doing a competitive procurement. Your customers are likely going to face higher rates. But you have the opportunity to put in lots of new features that you'd like to see. If this happens, you need to give notification to the hauler this year. Procurement will start next summer, and a new contract will start January first, twenty-twenty-nine. The section, second option is amending your current contract. So the customer cost and the features and services are going to vary based on what you want. And the last one is no change. That means the rates are not changing except for the contract-allowed annual increases and no change to the features and services. So there's no timing associated with that. And I'm going to turn it back over to Megan for discussion.
All right, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and, Councilmember Scarborough, and then we'll come back out to you, Megan, okay?
What is the allowed increase per year in this contract?
Great question. So there's two components to the rate. One is the disposal and one is the service component. So your disposal component, it goes up by the Snohomish County tipping fees, which is significant this year. If I can say the least. And then your CPI, the service-related increase is, through this, it is the water sewer trash, which is generally slightly higher than the CPI, the regular CPI for workers. And I believe the rate this year is about five and a half percent for that.
So it could go up five and a half percent next year.
That is just on the service component. So the disposal component of the rate will go up by the King County, or I'm sorry, the Snohomish County tipping fee, which is about fifty percent increase. And then the service component, and I can't give you a straight answer because every rate varies on what part is service and what part is disposal. But I believe we're looking at, for residents, probably in the teens for an increase, just with the contract allowed.
Thank you. Megan, if you could just go ahead and finish up your presentation, and then we'll go to general questions.
That basically was what I was going to say is tonight, we're just welcoming any feedback or thoughts that the council has about how to proceed forward, and then just hoping to answer any questions that you may have about what the options are to move forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Walker?
Yeah, just to express my opinion, I think it'd be prudent, or at least in my mind, I'd like to wait about a month to make a decision, just so we can think on this.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Beaumont, go ahead.
Thank you very much for the presentation. So just thinking this through, if we did decide to terminate our contract, that means that Republic Services would still be our hauler for the next three years. In your experience, has this been an issue to have a hauler knowing that they are not being renewed, yet still in the community picking up our garbage for three years?
That's an excellent question. This happens in competitive procurements all of the time. During the process, there's the potential
During the process, there's the potential that they will be selected as the incumbent in generally proposing the lowest costs. So you will see definitely very professional behavior that you're used to. Once we get to the part where the new contract is assigned, most of these companies still continue to act in a professional fashion. They have other cities that they're working with. It's very rare that you'll see poor customer service because they're not coming back. They're generally pretty good.
One other question I had, I believe in our current contract, when there's a service disruption, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the communication was supposed to be daily during a service disruption. Is that accurate?
If you'll give me one minute to reference the exact words. And the reason why this is a difficult thing to answer is because the definition of the word "day" in the contract can vary.
Right, business day versus non-business.
Was it your service day, a business day, or a calendar day? And I can either have staff get back to you, or I could take a minute to look it up.
I, I, that's okay, because I, I have it. It's in our agenda notes from a couple of weeks ago or last week, I believe, so I, I can find it, too. I just thought you might know off the top of your head, because to me, if we do an amendment, we definitely, that communication was key, and we would want to make sure that, if it's not already in there, that that's in there. Thank you. Great presentation.
Thank you. And just for the council's awareness, a couple of options you have, we can bring this back at a future meeting. We can bring it back to a date certain future meeting. We also have the ability to, if the council would like, to have it assigned to the P-three committee for a more in-depth review. The next P-three meeting is on October twenty-eighth. You, you, of course, have other options you can consider, but I'm just identifying a couple of items right there. Councilmember Walker, you're up next.
I'd like to make a motion to delay further discussion for a month.
Okay, we have, we have a motion from Councilmember Walker, second from Councilmember Fisher. Any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Gamble?
I appreciate that. I will not be voting for that, and it's probably just more because of, this is, for me, ten years with this particular provider, and we've already done, we've had work stoppages before, we've had where we can't answer the phone, and we've gone months and years on fixing that, just from a call center perspective. So, you know, from just where I sit, I don't need another month. Like, this process is going to take a long time. And I think we should be strategic and, and go after it, and we should look at putting it out for an RFP. That, but that's, that's just me. You know, I've, I've had, one, they're not here. They haven't been here. We're obviously not happy, and they haven't even showed up, and that just is a testament to kind of the experience I've, I've had. They used to. But yeah, I'm, uh, I, we've, we've done the other options. We've done the no change because it's, or we've done a change, and it just hasn't been backed up. We even had in there, you know, in the, the comment about, well, we didn't know it's a sympathy strike or whatever. That's baloney. We, we, we had that before. We had a sympathy, you know, they've had them, they've had them before. We used to have it in the contract. We had stricter language in the contract around work stoppages. They took that out, so going full well, but they have those issues, and they still haven't, from my perspective, taken care of it from an operations and consistency perspective. So as far as I'm concerned, I'm ready to open it up and, and, and take a look and see what other options are that are out there, but that's me.
Thank you. Councilmember Scarborough, discussion on the motion.
Okay, I'm trying to understand, Councilman.
Councilmember, we're not supposed to be dialoguing back and forth, so.
I'm trying to understand what he said, Mayor.
Okay.
Okay, so you're, you're advocating for an RFP. Do we have to have given these people notice that we're terminating their contract in three years in order to put an RFP out? Or if we put an RFP out, does that indicate that we have decided to terminate these people in two and a half years?
Because of the way the process works and kind of the overlap in timelines, we would want to give notice of termination before the end of this year so that we could start an RFP process next. It would, it would start about the third quarter of 2026. And the reason for that is that we're.
I won't.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I won't be voting at all because I don't understand it. Thank you.
Councilmember Scarborough, you asked your question. I just want to make certain, if, since you're asking it of staff, I do want to make certain that you, that you get the answer that you're looking for. Can, can, is there a need to restate the question, or it sounds like it's about a three-year?
Sounds like we have to, by the end of this year, we have to make a decision to put out an RFP. Is that correct?
By the end of this year, we have to decide, step one is whether to, we want to give notice to terminate the contract. And that's because there's a requirement in our current contract that we have to notify by December thirty-first, which starts the three-year process of, of terminating the contract.
And if I look at the, the figures that you showed us, there's a good chance that a new RFP is going to go up about thirty to thirty-three percent?
It is likely that, yes, the, if we were to bid on a new contract, that the companies that would put forth a proposal would likely have higher rates than what are being currently collected right now.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Beaumont?
Thank you. And Councilmember Scarborough, I appreciate that you are speaking out when you are not clear about what's going on. I think that's really important. Thank you for that. I wanted to ask if it is possible for us to find out what other communities are doing, Snohomish, for instance. What are they doing? Is there any way that we can find out what kind of arrangements are being made, if they're planning to do this kind of thing? I'd be curious to know. We talked a little bit about it last week. I, I'd like to know what the communication has been from Republic Services toward these other communities, so we have a little bit of a basis of comparison. And to Councilmember Gamble's previous comment, I thought, when I first saw you, that the person accompanying you was from Republic Services, and I was really excited about that. That's what I thought was happening tonight, is this was someone representing the company, coming to talk to us and apologize, and talk about what can be done to help going forward. Thank you.
Okay.
I, I was just going to follow up, that we can absolutely make some phone calls and, and find out what some of the neighboring cities that utilized Republic Services are, are doing. Yeah.
Councilmember Beaumont, Jacob said he can answer that question.
I was just going to say, we'll have that for you next week.
Oh, there you go.
So, yeah. I would also, just to speak to Councilmember Scarborough's request, Republic did send out an email just a couple of days ago that I looked up while we were sitting here. The increase for a thirty-two-gallon can cart weekly was about thirteen percent in Monroe, is what they're, they're showing in their worksheets. Haven't evaluated that fully. That was just the garbage portion, so just to kind of give you a context piece there. Preliminary number, I guess.
Anything further, Councilmember Beaumont? Thank you. Councilmember Fisher?
I'm just going to call you Mr. Roberts, because I'm not sure how many titles you have, you have right now. Is that thirteen percent for disposal and staff for them?
I haven't evaluated that number fully. I just pulled it up here, just to give you an idea of where they were, but that's what it appears to be from, from my perspective.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then talking about what we were all talking about up here, I am in agreement to look at this again in a month. I'm also okay with possibly looking at an RFP after that, but I think we need a month to, opening an RFP after that. I think we need to take a, take a month or so to kind of figure out what we have going on here.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion? All right, saying none, I'll go ahead and call for the question. All in favor of having this come back in about a month to the council? Say aye. All opposed? Okay, I understood the motion was to bring this back to the council in about a month. Okay, does everybody understand that that is the motion? The motion is to have this come back to the council in about a month. All right, all those in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Aye.
So we got two opposed. Councilmember Scarborough, did I hear you? No comments, okay. So I have, got to do some math here, so the motion was four in favor, and we have two opposed, councilmembers Beaumont and Gamble, and Councilmember Scarborough is, goes with majority, okay. All right, thank you. Motion passes five-two. Thank you very much. All right, that takes us to the end of our agenda. We do not have a need for an executive session. So unless there is any other business this evening, and if there, as long as there is no objection, we are adjourned. All right, have a great week, everybody. Thank you.
You made it.
I did. We finished about, yeah.